Good evening, everybody, and thank you for watching the Southampton, Village of Southampton Planning Commission meeting for January. So we'll have the first, the Pledge of Allegiance. So Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the Republic of Russia. Okay, so we do now the roll call. Pamela, Pamela Gilmore.
I'm here.
Yeah, Laura DeVine. I think maybe Laura will join us later from Zoom. She's enjoying Puerto Rico right now. Eduardo, I was hoping Eduardo would be here tonight. Not here. Christian Picco.
Here.
Okay, Bob Assay.
Here.
Okay, Michelangelo.
Present.
Okay, Michael Anderson.
Here.
Okay, and Mark Shepherd, myself. So we'll, I'd just like to make a quick motion to approve the previous minutes of meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, adopted. The next item that we have on the agenda here was the, an update on Proposition Three, which is the affordable housing initiative that's being, that the la, the town is leading. And they are, from what I understand, they're expecting some funding by around May or June. They've, they have appointed a new CPF executive director. It's exactly the same. And they are still working on the applications for, to appoint the various people on the board that will supervise these funds. And it's not that we're going to be, we're tracking seventeen, a board of seventeen members to be appointed. So I think we're, we're still, we're on top of it and we're keeping an eye on it. The next item on the agenda is the silver and graceful work. Unfortunately, this is rescheduled again by Paul Travis and DB Engineering. But I really would like to, don't to come at our next meeting and give us an update as to whatever it is. I understand that has not yet been finalized, but it should be, um, uh, they are definitely working on it. Yeah. We have here Eduardo just joined us. Welcome, Eduardo.
Hi.
So the next item on the agenda is a few updates from our village planner, Alex Wallach. Maybe you can tell us a little bit about what is, what is new with the proposed zoning strategy for the, for the Arts and Culture Overly District?
Yeah, I don't think there's any real update on that. I think that proposal is still with the trustees for review. Um, as far as I know, they don't think they've scheduled any other, uh, further hearings on it.
Uh, okay, and what is the thrust of this, uh, of this Arts and Overly District?
It would clarify that certain arts and cultural uses are permitted, um, on the Jobbs Lane area. Um, I think there was a recommendation to consider adjusting the height of certain buildings, um, in that area as well. Um, I think those are the, the two main points.
Mm-hmm. And is there any, uh, maybe tax abatement or any advantages that are being proposed to try to foster or encourage?
I don't think it was part of the memo, um, that was part of the BFJ memo.
It was just a, just zoning incentives or allowing, uh?
Yep, it was, uh, certain zoning changes, that's right.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I think, uh, you know, please keep us posted and see, so nothing has been scheduled for a public hearing?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, not since, um, I think there was one, uh, meeting on it prior. Um, I haven't heard of a, of a follow-up meeting scheduled.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. And on the next one is the, there was the architectural and historical structures reconnaissance survey?
Uh, yeah, that work is continuing. The consultants were back in Southampton for a second round of site visits, um, to confirm some things. Um, I think the report, they said, is about sixty percent done, so I think we're expecting that within the next few months.
Oh, the next few months, mm-hmm. And are there any, uh, so they are gonna recreate a new architectural or a new landmarks, uh, district? Or only still individual structures?
Um, well, they're probably gonna make a recommendation that may be for new districts. It may be for individual landmarks. Um, it's gonna, based on the results of, of what they find in the survey.
Mm-hmm.
Alex, is there a date in which they start looking at, a date when a house is built, uh, that they start looking at? And where they should make an historical note, like nineteen twenty-five or nineteen thirty-five?
And I think they consider, um, age is one of several factors. I don't think there's a, um, a specific cutoff that they're looking for.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it's fifty years, though. Anything, uh, anything, uh, more than fifty years needs to go through the ERB, um, Historical Committee.
If you're getting a demolition permit, that's correct.
Yes. And the next one was, the next item is the, the intermunicipal agreement and the, the village accepting the town home improvement contractor's license?
Um, I know that local law was passed. I don't have an update, uh, if there's been a change on the intermunicipal agreement.
Right.
That would be something we'd have to check with the, uh, village attorney.
Yeah, okay, so because this would, uh, allowed, basically, the town licensing review board to be able to review complaints against contractors operating in the village. Uh, right now, the jurisdiction is to the county. It would be, I think, would behoove the, the village to do it.
If I may, Alex, um, when I worked on the leaf blower legislation and the removing the permitting at the village level, it was the intent to delegate that authority to the town. And therefore, you do need to have an intermunicipal agreement to accompany this resolution that was passed for this, for this legislative change. Was it, that, so that needs to get done. This was six months ago.
You're talking about for the leaf blowers?
Well, it relates to, uh, the removal of the permitting for landscapers in the Southampton Village and the delegation in the text of the law to the town. Therefore, you need an intermunicipal agreement to put that in place.
Right, it required that the contractors hold a town home improvement contractor's license.
Right.
So then, in order to do this, you have to have an intermunicipal agreement. I think it's Sean, um, what's his name, at the town?
Sean McDermott?
No.
Sean Cambridge.
Sean Cambridge.
Sean Cambridge is the person at the town to speak to.
I mean, is, it's not really a village planner's responsibility, is it? Isn't it council to do this?
Well, I mean, if you reach out to Sean Cambridge, he should, I think they want to have an intermunicipal agreement.
But it is something that the, only the trustees and the town board could negotiate through council. That's not something that we would handle in the building department.
I see, okay. All right.
Well, it's an outstanding issue that needs to be solved.
Okay, very good. So on, into, let's go now on to the various, uh, task force that we have to give a little update. On the senior center task force, I don't think there's much of an update. Is there, Pamela?
No, not that, not that I'm aware of.
Right, there, there was no, no, nothing done since last month. On the Tree City USA, Christian, did we become, uh?
So, uh, the DEC in Albany, New York State is reviewing the file. I spoke with them. It'll be several months before we get an answer, but they have it and it's in good standing.
Mm-hmm.
Now, their review, the DEC's review is for and on behalf of the Arbor Foundation organizing the Tree City program.
Oh, I see. That's interesting. So the, the New York State DEC, that's very interesting. I, I wonder whether they would, they have something included there for, to set up deer, uh, hunting stations on the trees? Part of the regulations that.
Can you look into that?
Yeah, we should look into that. They have to be built into, into the trees, apparently. The, on the real estate task force, um, there's some effort's been done. Uh, at this time, nothing has been finalized, so there's really nothing much to report. But we always welcome any suggestions of any properties that, uh, anybody feels that maybe the village should look into to acquire. Uh, definitely, so we would welcome any, the input from the public. On the term limit task force, uh, we just had a meeting today. We have not yet finalized hundred percent the recommendations. But, uh, the idea is to, um, right now, we have elections every year that are being held at, on the third Friday of June, every year. And we would like to change the, the terms to have only elections every second year. The, right now, the problem is that also our June election coincides a lot with the primaries. And sometimes the, the, the Board of Elections cannot even provide the machines. So for example, at the last election, uh, the village had to rent out the ballot machines and, and, um, at the cost of close to twenty thousand dollar. And we think also that elections every year is really not warranted. So in order to change that, we need to change the terms of the elected officials. And what is being proposed and being reviewed is to change the trustees to a four-year term. We, and, and possibly keep the mayor to a two-year term, but the trustees would be for a four-year term. And then at that point, we would have elections only every two years. And then the mayor would then also then run, um, depending on the election cycle, with one set of trustees and then the next election cycle to another, uh, uh?
So you're back to elections every year anyway?
No, no, no.
No, no, every two years.
Every two years. You have it every two years.
However, can I, I mean, I.
Sure, sure.
I, I don't think it's such a good idea. I mean, the House of Representatives, they have two-year terms. Uh, they're just for, in order for, make it easier for the trustees to not have to run every two years. I don't think it's such a good idea, um.
Well, we have, you see, we have four trustees. So two trustees are up on, 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 on one cycle, two trustees are up on the other cycle.
If I may say, I mean, who's, who's on the task force?
Uh, Pamela is on the task force, I am on the task force, and then we have three other people from the public on the task force.
From the public, okay.
From the public, yes. So we have a, a great group. We have Walter Dean, who is very involved with the hospital, uh, hospital. We have Susan Steinhardt, who is also on the Ethics Committee. And then we have Bob Lohman, who is a long-time resident.
I have one comment on this. If the logic is that we don't want the trustees to focus on running for half of their term, why would we not want to apply that same logic to also the mayor? Wouldn't we want him to be on a four-year term or her to be on a four-year term as well? So that that individual is not spending one year campaigning and one year executing.
You're right, you're right, there is, uh, you're right, I mean, the discussion is still there. No, no final decisions have been made. But for example, at the town, it is also similar, where the supervisor is elected for two years and then the, the council person is elected for four years. Uh, we think that the, because the, the trustees are, um, sort of, some, in charge of a department, uh, whether it's the fire department, whether it's the building department, whether it's the tax department, they, they are, so you want a little bit more continuity for them to, to be. So we thi, we thought it was a good idea to have the, the trustees changed to a four-year term. Uh, and, but again, with too staggering.
Yeah, I would.
There is continuity. And then this, the mayor, you know, then, then, since you have an election every two years anyway for the trustees, then you may as well, you keep the mayor as on the two-year term.
I guess I would ask the committee to consider the intent. Why are we viewing this? If we're reviewing, if we're reviewing this for the purpose of ensuring that our elected officials have more time actually passing legislation and running programs and, then we should be thinking of that intent in the context of also the mayor.
Yes, that's a good point. The, the advantage of having the two and the four is that then the mayor also runs with two different trustees at every election year. Every second year, he runs with a different set of trustees.
And what's the advantage of that?
Yeah.
Mark, have you considered a three-year term for the trustees? You know, and, cause the four-year term is a big commitment for people to make, too. Um, you know, maybe a three-year commitment would be better than the, uh, the current two years for sure. Cause I don't agree with the two-year, I think it's just.
You're perpetually campaigning.
It is, and hardly, you know, the work that they have to do to camp, they're their own campaign force. They don't have anybody else to help them campaign. They're out there actually doing it, so it's very difficult for them every two years.
For any of us who've started a new job, I don't know about you, but I have not been very successful in the first year. Let alone the second year. It takes a little time to get acclimated.
Yeah, I understand, no, these are all good points that we're reviewing. So no, no final decision has been made yet, but we'll definitely take these points into, uh, consideration.
I think the overall intent, though, is not to have annual elections.
Right, right.
I think there's voter fatigue and there's costs associated for the village to administer, uh, and it's very cumbersome and.
And it's not good governance.
Yeah, and, and how, how much benchmarking has been done with other communities to see how they are organized?
Yeah, we have, we have, uh, actually contacted most of the villages around and most of them are on a two-year.
Election cycle?
Two-year election cycle, yes. There's very few that are every year election cycle. So that's, uh, something in the works and we have also, we're talking to the town attorney, the new town attorney, Andrew Preston, who also has had some input into it, you know, to make sure how we would transition, specifically on how we transition. And, okay, the, the next item on the agenda, moving right along, is, uh, the deer task force. Michael wants to talk about it.
Sure, um, we've made a lot of headway in the last month. Um, on December seventh, I had a meeting with Charlene concerning a law that's been on the books, whether it was actually rescinded or not, revoked. And, um, took a while for us to find out whether it was or not, and it came, turned out to be that it was not. That there is still the same law on the books that I believe was written in fifteen or sixteen. So in speaking with Charlene, she had suggested that all the, all the, we have to do as a commission is to make a recommendation to the village board to take action through, it could be as simple as an email. We just have to vote on it as to whether or not we want to send this recommendation to the village board to start taking action, uh, on it, on the deer issues that we have. Also discussed with Charlene was the next step, what she thought would be the, the best next step for, for us to pursue was to have a meeting with the village police. Um, we also got, uh, a man by the name of Michael Testori. He's from Suffolk County, um, deer management, who, uh?
No, he's not with the county, he's, he has his own firm that provides.
Yes, it's called Suffolk County Deer Management. That's the name of his firm.
Right, so it's a private.
Who has done work in the past for the village. She suggested that we get together with, uh, police captain, Hurtow, um, which we did yesterday. Uh, Mark was there, uh, Mayor, um, Warren was there, trustee arrested was there via Zoom and so was Charlene. So we spoke about, um, what was done in the past and how we could move forward, uh, in the future. Everybody was very excited about what we were doing, very happy that we were doing it. Uh, Mayor Warren said that he's heard from many, uh, residents about the, about the issue and the problems and something does need to be done. So it was a productive meeting. Uh, we had asked Mr. Testori to come back to give us some specific proposals as to what he can do for the village. Um, there's several different programs that he runs. Uh, he runs programs for several other municipalities. Um, and he's going to get back to us with a proposal and we'll sit down and talk to him about what he can do.
Right, so what, one of, one thought was to be able to use a village property to be able to set up those, uh, sort of, shooting station. Cause apparently for, uh, you have to, they have to shoot from, uh, above, it cannot be, so.
It can only be bow and arrow.
Yeah.
Um, there's no guns involved. Um, and, uh, that he's, Mark's talking about tree stands. Uh, people steal this, uh, tree stands that are against the hunting. And, um, so that was an issue for course for them. But, uh, he's presently working on private property now. People can go out and hire him and, uh, he can work on, on, on private property.
Yeah.
It's doing, you know.
I asked what the law was that you, this, um, what does it say?
I'm sorry?
You said there, there was a law that hasn't been rescinded, what does it say?
Um, well, I think I, I can give you the law later on after the meeting.
Yeah, but just the gist of it.
Um, well, it's very, it's legalese, it's complicated. Um, I wouldn't want to try to tell you what it says now. I'll give you the document that says what it can, what it actually says.
The purpose of the law and.
The purpose was, the law was to allow.
To be able to shoot.
Allow culling.
To have a law in place to shoot the deer.
To, to allow to shoot the deer. It's a, it's a very controversial, uh, uh, issue. Some people think that it, you know, we should use other methods like sterilization, like, uh, many things, you know.
Well, that's extremely expensive, extremely expensive. And it doesn't really work, as he said to us at the meeting yesterday.
Right, so we.
But, you know, we might have him come and present to the board.
Why would it work if you can sterilize the deer?
It's too long of a process, it's, and it's too costly.
It's costly.
That's, that's what he was saying, it's very, very costly.
I mean, there's no question that being at the police department, you know, where most of the police officers are hunters and they, so there's no question that they, they thought that this was a great solution, that the culling is a great solution. The issue is that really the deer population has like skyrocketed to a level that, you know, something needs to be done, uh, and that, that there's very few options but culling. Now, we've also spoken.
You're talking about culling within the village.
Sorry?
You're talking about culling within the village.
Yes.
You're not in a forest or anything.
Right, exactly.
I don't think it's a very good idea. I'm, I'm against to start with any, any killing whatsoever. Sterilization, motherfucking's fine, but.
Mark? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, listen, uh, one night, going to a fire down Halsey Neck Lane, a deer ran out in front of our fire truck. I'll tell you, it, he almost came through our windshield, that's how close he came. The deer population needs to be controlled, it's, it's getting very dangerous.
Yes.
Everybody recognizes it's an issue.
Right, they definitely, exactly. It is, it has been brought to an issue and there's really very few other solutions than, than, uh, culling or, uh? Now, we've also contacted the New York State DEC, Lisa Lupo, uh, who's in charge of, who's the biologist in charge of those programs. The town also has, uh, programs under the supervision of Marley Shea. Uh, they have a deer management program. Now, there, the town is also, you know, they don't favor much the culling. No, they don't make favor much culling. So, um, you know, but it is something that, that we are looking into, something that needs to be done, that, you know, rarely, um, so, and Michael Anderson has been very active in this. So hopefully, we'll have a proposal from this company. We'll see if anybody else has any other suggestions. Um, but we, we definitely need to do something about it.
Mark, um, for me, uh, deer are more than a nuisance. And the most basic duty of a government is to protect its citizens. Um, deer have become a public safety issue, it's clear. And I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommends to the Board of Trustees to renew the contract as, uh, the task force has found for deer management, so.
We haven't, we haven't, we don't have a contract yet.
I, I understand that, but you have a contract that was in place and the recommendation should be to continue that work. So we need to have the Planning Commission to vote, to have, uh, this, uh, reviewed and continued in terms of the work that the task force has done. That's what the Board of Trustees wants us to vote on. So I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, do that. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd second it.
All in favor?
Wait, 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 discussion, discussion. I think that right now, uh, right now, we are, we don't really have the, a proposal from anyone to do.
I understand, that's the Board of Trustees' job. It is our job to recommend the Board of Trustees go forward with a negotiation, a contract, a deer management program is what I said.
Right.
So what we're voting for, and we have a motion and a second, is whether the Planning Commission has enough vote to encourage the Board of Trustees to do their job.
Yes, and, and put in place a deer management.
So.
That's correct.
So, well, let's just go through a roll call. Do we, who's, who's in favor?
Let's rephrase the, the, the motion. So the motion is that for us to make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to implement a deer management plan.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
May.
May?
No, cause you're going down the path of, uh, culling, so, but he may.
Well.
Okay, who's on, that's fine. Who's, who's in favor? Could we have the, uh, favors first, please?
Aye.
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 And against?
Eduardo.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Okay, motion passed, okay, fine, yes. And we'll continue the work, we'll see what other solutions there may be, whatever can it be. And, uh, you know, that, that would be part of a deer management plan that we have. All right, the next item is, uh, on the Mobility and Transportation Task Force. I don't think there's a.
I can speak to this. So I, I've reviewed the comprehensive plans, recommendations on mobility and transportation, specifically as it pertains to biking, um, walkability. There are a number of recommendations. Um, how we prioritize them is a question. Um, it's specifically that in the downtown area, um, of course, connecting to some of our major village focal points such as beaches. Um, there may be some, that might be low-hanging fruit. The, the heavier items are really that number one and number two items, which is, in my, in my opinion, the Nugent and Windmill Street, uh, excuse me, Windmill Lane. Um, and ensuring that there's some connection through Hampton Road. Uh, but before we, I guess, go down that, uh, there's some other news. And your, your old employer, Jonathan Keys, um, and Trust for Public Land, on a regional scale, are, um, hopefully going to apply to a federal RACE grant for five million dollars for a planning, uh, regional bikeway plan. And, uh, we can be a part of, a part of that. I've spoken to the mayor, he's interested. Um, that would most likely, though, bypass the downtown. That would probably be connecting Riverhead to Montauk and we'd be a part of that. Um, especially probably by, by the train station, um, or along Montauk Highway. But if the route, uh, but we could end up being actually a main component, uh, because if we're most likely, as a town, not gonna go down County Road Thirty-nine, we maybe we're visiting Montauk Highway. And therefore, we'd have to cut through the village. So a portion of that grant would add, would be, uh, used here. Um, so I kind of want to make you all aware of that and maybe open this up for a little discussion on how we want to get involved and where we think some of, where our, our interests are. I know, of course, there's also intersections here that we could pay a lot of attention to, specifically by the library, as well as at the south side of Main Street, uh, at the corner of Meeting House Lane and Jobbs Lane. You know, that, that, that pedestrian walkability is, with that signage, uh, and that light is lacking.
Yeah, well, maybe we could create a, a task force where we could involve some of the bicycle shops, uh, in the area who have, uh, who are also stakeholders in that and that maybe, you know, how can you improve and, uh, foster more use of, uh, bicycles in the.
Personally, I think we're kind of beyond the task force because it's, you know, the comp plan is, is making some pretty solid recommendations. But let's say we were to pursue Windmill Lane and Nugent Street. Right, now, the question is, well, are we looking at buffing up the parking lot? And, excuse me, the parallel parking spaces to protect the pedestrian bikers? Or if you look at the recommendations, uh, let me also encourage you all, and the comp plan, on, on the back portion, it, it really bullets out the recommendations. So if you find the hundred page is too much to, to read, which I totally understand, um, that component, that portion really does lay out solid recommendations for transportation. That being said, on page fifty-two, eh, you can see some kind of rendering, um, of what biking could look like on these two streets. Um, we could go the path of a task force, sure. Um, but there's also the county and the town. We can go on that, on that board and the Trust for Public Land would be the ones implementing the planning recommendations.
Right.
Or the actual plan.
I think if we want to do a task force with, uh, maybe two people from the Planning Commission and maybe three people who are like stakeholders i- in this area that are in the village, uh, maybe they, we, they could get better recommendations, better ideas, you know? I think that, uh, you know, there's nothing like having, uh, local people who know the area, know the market, know the, what's happening, uh, take it to the next level. take it to the next level.
Mark, can I ask one question? I had one of the village residents ask me about, is there a possibility the village ever extending the sidewalk up Hill Street? Say to Ensteins or Corrigan Street?
Yeah, that's, I, I think that the, there should definitely uh, be additional more sidewalks and also the sidewalks should be uh, all repaired.
That's also a recommendation in the comp plan.
Yes.
That speaks to sidewalks.
Can speak to sidewalks, so maybe, yes.
Um, gentlemen, a- as far as mobility is concerned, there is a recommendation that I would like to make that is not in the comp plan. And that is the intersection at the end of Nugent Lane and Windmill Lane. This is the right turn as you go uh, west on Nugent Lane to make a right onto Windmill Lane. That intersection uh, right in front of the uh, Rogers Memorial Library for which I'm a trustee is actually uh, dangerous. Uh, there is no um, uh, pedestrian way to cross at that particular location on the north side of that inter- intersection. And I think if we're gonna have bicycle paths down there, one of the first thing to be done is to have a proper four-way intersection there as opposed to this right turn, which is extremely dangerous for pedestrians. And I see kids from the Southampton School uh, going down to the library there and crossing dangerously. And I, this is not addressed in the plan and that should be a rec- first recommendation to the board of trustees.
I think that, I think it's something that the, that's gonna be a task force could look into. I mean, if you wanna, maybe Christian and, and Michael and John.
We've worked well together in the past.
So why not?
Do I have to work with him again?
Yeah, so why don't you, why don't you create a task force and involve the owners of maybe the rotations of our.
This might be happening faster than we think. If the county pursues this grant, uh, the more I think about it, they're gonna most likely have to cut through the village.
Yeah, they're gonna do Hill, they're gonna do County Thirty-nine, absolutely.
So then that means they're going to pay for the plant, the grant would.
I mean, Old Montauk Highway, I meant, sorry, yeah.
And so you get a plan, you get specs, design, and then the next step would be RFP to construction. Right, so this could be that first step.
Let me think about it, once you get to the end of Hill Street, you're gonna make a left on Windmill. And uh, you're gonna be going through the very intersection I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Creating more chaos in that intersection, this needs to be dealt with.
But it, it would be dealt with in the plan, they would be reviewing it, identifying the issues.
Would take care of that intersection.
Right, okay.
So they would be offering recommendations on how to make that pedestrian intersection more, uh, excuse me, that intersection more friendly to pedestrians.
Okay, I'm happy to work with you on this, Michael Angelo, overall.
Be more friendly to cars. I really, you, you, I mean, that's where I live and you, you hit that intersection and you're dipping down all over the place. It's very dangerous, very dangerous.
Okay, fantastic, so now we have, so let's, we'll have a new task force on this thing, thank you, Michael. The next item on the agenda, uh, we're keeping an eye on the liberty development. There's nothing much to update at this time, I think uh, the, the process is going through it.
Excuse me, Mark, Bob, did you have something to say?
Yes, I just wanted to say one thing, when you're going down Windmill Lane, don't forget there's a firehouse there. And when that alarm goes off, you've got firemen responding in that firehouse. So that is a really tough intersection to put bicycle paths and walking paths through. Uh, I've grown up in this area and there's been times where I was trying to get to the firehouse and I couldn't get through the firehouse because there's gridlock with traffic.
Yeah, it's a good point, good point. So the, uh, next point, the aid on, I, I have on the agenda, liberty development, which is the, the affordable housing development right on outside the, the village, it's, it's taking its uh, it's taking its route through the town. I think what they're wait. For SECR, so we're, we're, we're keeping an eye on it. The next one was the, on the, on the possible workforce housing overlay. I don't know if Alex, you can update us on, if there's.
Uh, just that there was a, a scope of work proposed by uh, BFJ, I, I don't believe it's yet been accepted by the trustees.
Okay, very good. All right, next point was uh, that we had, we were asked to review, but I don't think anyone did anything on that yet. It was the, the creation of a, of a business improvement district, of a bid for the village. I'm not sure, Alex, uh, d- uh, can, do you have any uh, updates on?
Sure, I understand.
Uh, I, this is maybe the first that I'm, I'm hearing about this.
It was the, it was the, well, the, the mayor, uh, who is actually a, a, one of the, who has his, his own business on Main Street would like to uh, review the possibility to create a business improvement district for the village business center. Um, it is spelled out here in Article nineteen A of the General Municipal Law. Um, I know that there was a s- suggestion to maybe involve the Business Alliance or the Southampton Chamber uh, to get their input on that. I don't know if somebody wants to take the lead on.
At the last meeting, we were discussing this, we still didn't understand what it meant.
Yeah, you don't really understand what they want.
Maybe you wanna explain what the business improvement district is, what, what it means.
Uh, I, okay.
Related to taxes, but.
Yeah, I think it does, it does, it, it allows the, once you create a business improvement district, then you are able to add a little tax for those businesses to maybe for signage, for cleanup, for other improvements that they may wanna do in that area. Yes. So it allows them to raise funds to be able to, whether it's improve the sidewalk, create, you know, more signage, create more.
Pay the taxes.
The p- the, whoever is within the business improvement district.
I think you have to get, find out what they think about it.
Yes, yeah, we could do that.
That answer's gonna be quick.
I don't know if somebody wants to take the lead on that? Michael, you would like to be?
I think Eduardo's a great candidate for it.
Yes, Eduardo.
I don't understand it.
All right, so we'll, we'll review it a little bit and get back. The next item was uh, I think it was something mentioned by Christian at the last meeting, which was to try to see how we could improve the transparency with village documents. Uh, and I think it's something that maybe Alex could look into.
Uh, I can update on that. Um, ever since Charlene is here, all of the um, resolution documents are all um, scanned and searchable, fully searchable. It's about the history, um, B C as she likes to call it. That's before Kathy and Charlene.
Right, I mean, th- this is a matter of, I think also maybe adding some modules to the, what is the name of that software that the village uses?
Civic Engage?
Which one?
Civic Engage?
Yeah, Civic Engage, exactly. So it's, I think there are modules that you can buy that, you know, where there's more transparency for building permit applications for uh, for review, for documents, you know.
I believe the building permit applications are going online.
Oh, they are gonna go online, so we've got that module?
I believe so.
Yeah, that, that would be very good to do. And the, the G I S of the town is a, is a very good one. Um, yeah, we should, more transparency, the better.
Can I ask Alex a question since you sit in the building department on the second floor? Um, the files, the building files are all in the building in the second floor, right?
Not all of them, um, many of them, but some of the older ones are archived in other places.
So the current business at least is upstairs on the second floor. And if there's a fire on the second floor and you don't have those scanned or anywhere on a cloud, um, can you tell me what happens?
I, I couldn't say, it's a, a hypothetical, that hopefully won't have to address.
Yeah, you don't run government on the hope.
Well, the, the town hall has a good fire alarm system, so it should. The village is, the village is a good fire alarm system.
Oh, seriously, that, I think it is a, a point to think about in terms of having copies elsewhere.
Or going fully digital.
Or going digital, I mean, I, I, I think it's horrendous to think that we have our entire building department files standing up there without any backup if there's a fire that totals the building.
Well, almost all act- active cases, we do have digital copies of plans for, that we provide to, to board members.
Oh, you do, okay.
Um, but I, I think that probably be a concern for all the.
Yeah.
The, the ones, I don't, I'm not sure what's in the basement, we have also, um, files archived on the third floor. I understand a lot of that has been digitized in the past. Um, and is available in a digital database.
I, I saw files dating back to nineteen forty-six and forty-seven.
Right. Iron Mountain as a company does a great job in digitizing documents. What you're witnessing here in the building department is true throughout the country and that's their business, to digitize documents.
Right, yeah, so.
I think we'd have to go to an RFP though, I don't think we can.
Well, you'd have to recognize you have a potential issue there to begin with.
Yeah, but I think it's a good item to keep on the agenda. I think it's to add more transparency, to add more, uh, make the documents more available, it's a win-win situation for everybody. Okay, and then the next item on the agenda, is there any public comments? I don't see much, much of the public in the room tonight.
Packed house today.
Um, can I, before we do this, I, we don't have on the agenda, but I'd like to ask Alex, where are we with asking BFJ for um, study on uh, attainable housing and zoning for multifamily housing?
Is this a, a new proposal?
Uh, it's, proposal has been asked for BFJ to, to do, to best of my knowledge, has that come through yet?
Who a- asked BFJ to prepare that?
Uh, the trustees, I think led by Manger.
Um, um, if you're talking about the workforce housing in the office district?
Yeah.
That we talked about earlier?
No, I didn't.
Oh, I'm, I'm not aware of that proposal.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Alex, I, I have a question, especially because it's been echoed again in the comp plan, as you can see, I've finally really dove into it. Um, I started a clean energy community program. Village Board uh, passed a resolution saying they were going to pursue New York stretch code. Are there any developments there? Cause I don't, I still to this day don't think that they've passed any code itself.
Uh, I don't think I've heard any update on about that.
Is there any way that you'd be able to bring that to the board's attention or?
To, to the trustees?
Yes.
Um.
I think that the, the applications uh, made to the village require the compliance with the New York stretch code.
You, you do?
Yes.
Oh, they, so they did pass, they passed it?
I know, but they require it, the building department, the, the HERS rating need to meet the.
Okay, well, is that something you would be, can investigate, just so we're up to date to see if they'd actually?
It's something I'd have to follow up with the, with the building inspector.
Okay, is that something you'd mind double checking with?
Um, I can try asking them about that.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
So then I can move on to another clean energy community action item.
Yes. All right, so if uh, I think we're moving right along and if, if there's no other comments, we'll make a motion to adjourn and schedule our next meeting for uh, February second.
Second emotion.
Have any favors?
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.